All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. I now call this meeting of the Sacramento City Council to order at 5:02 PM. Madam City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you. Councilmember Kaplan.
Here.
Councilmember Tao.
Here.
Mayor Protem Talamontes.
Here.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Here.
Councilmember Gara.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Councilmember Vang.
Here.
I expect the mayor momentarily, and Vice Mayor Maple.
I am here. Thank you. Councilmember Tao, would you please lead us in the land acknowledgement and pledge of allegiance?
Please rise for the opening acknowledgement in honor of Sacramento's indigenous people and tribal lands. To the original people of this land, the Nisanan people, the Southern Maydou Valley and Plains Miwok, Putwen Wintu peoples, and the people of the Weltran Rancheria, Sacramento's only federally recognized tribe. May we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather today in the active practice of acknowledgement and appreciation for Sacramento's indigenous people's history, contributions, and lives. Thank you. Please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, councilmember. Appreciate that. And Madam City Attorney, do we have anything to report out of closed session?
There is nothing to report on at this time.
Thank you. All right. So now, moving on to the consent calendar. Do any members have items that they wish to comment on or pull for a separate hearing?
Questionnaire item number two.
Okay. So item number two, Councilmember Gara. Councilmember Kaplan.
Two and six.
Okay. And Councilmember Tao? Okay. And anyone else? All right, seeing none. Okay, we'll start first with Councilmember Gara on item number two.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. First, I just, I wanted to thank the public work staff here and all the team. We know we've put a heavy charge to trying to find avenues and locations where we can actually reduce the speed limits and create roadways that are safer. I'm very happy to see this report and where we've made an effort to have a legal standard to be able to not only reduce the speed limits over on Folsom Boulevard and Fruit Ridge Road. These are two areas where we have schools adjacent to four-lane roadways. And also, sadly, two roadways where we've had vehicles, pedestrian fatalities related to our schools. And so for me, this is, you know, having crossed Fruit Ridge recently for the fire station open, Station 10 open house and seeing what the difficulty that parents and kids go through in those areas, reducing the speed limit goes a long way. I also want to thank the staff for considering Kukamunga as an area where we can set that speed limit so we can have some enforcement. This is where kids, just yesterday, SAC United opened up their season, this fall season, for soccer. And making sure that we're also enforcing an area where we have kids crossing Kukamunga to and from the soccer fields. And this is age as young as, you know, four and five, and making sure that we have it safe over at Granite Regional Park. Again, you know, this is one phase. We need to work more on the infrastructure side as well with speed limits. And also, what I'd like to make sure, and I think staff has mentioned that, they'll be working with law enforcement to do also the enforcement side on the speed limits. Because the speed limits alone aren't going to slow traffic down. We need to do the engineering and the enforcement side. Also want to thank, I know we were looking at the road diet there, but appreciate all the effort going around Earl Warren Elementary and also Phoebe Hurston on Folsom Boulevard. So with that, Vice Mayor, I'll go ahead and move the consent calendar. And when appropriate, looking for the vote.
Okay, great. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Thank you very much. Next up, we have Councilmember Kaplan on items two and six.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'll speak on item two, but I'd like Councilmember Tao to start on item six since it's in his district. And I just want to make a couple of comments.
Absolutely.
On that. I too want to commend city staff. This is a process that we have to look at with lowering our speed limits. There's a couple in District One. We know when drivers pay attention and slow down, less likely to result in fatal accidents. But want to, to the extent possible, I know that AB 43 that passed a couple of years ago, the city is hiring a consultant to look at potentially the data on reducing more speeds throughout our streets. And it's a process that the state set up with AB 43. My concern and hope that the city staff and consultant work on it, they're looking at data that could be five to 10 years old, which means District One gets left out. There have been recent incidences of individuals on bikes. And just last week, first day of school, we had a teacher hit and injured almost in the same area we've had somebody killed. So it's really important that, while I know we look at data, that we look at the most recent data because it leaves District One out. So I would just, when the time comes, City Manager, that, you know, I hear we've got data last five, 10 years, but to the extent that we can use the most recent just because we've seen a significant uptick in people being hit and bikes being hit. So when these recommendations come back on AB 43, because if I had my way, I'd say lower them all even further around our schools. But I know the consultant's working on the parameters state law gave us, but we need recent data when we do this. So thank you.
All right. And Councilmember Tao on item six?
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor. First off, I'd like to say thank you to our DCR team, Brian Pedjo and everyone, for continuing on this project in my district. This project was brought together by, you know, our CBOs and faith-based group and, you know, to serve transitional age youth. And this project has been ongoing to serve youth experiencing homelessness in my district. And I think they've done a great job. And so I just want to commend city staff for working to extend this lease and get this done to help serve our most vulnerable populations in my district.
And now Councilmember Kaplan, item six.
Thank you. I want to piggyback on that. We know our transitional age youth, especially those in foster care, are most vulnerable of ending up homeless on our streets and in jail. One of the things I really want to thank staff as going through and looking at this, the report did not provide any data on the outcomes of the youth that have been served. So I am thankful staff did get me that information that I'd just like to share. Since the launch of the program, 536 youth have been served with 70% exiting into positive destinations and 203 exiting into permanent housing. And since the beginning of this year, a total of 163 youth have been served with 74 exiting to positive destinations and 69 into permanent housing. You know, I think it's, we have to highlight, we've got a lot of work to do, but I think for transparency purposes, but also showing the accomplishments that we're doing in the city and the good work for our youth and the program that you have for these transitional age youth. I just hope that we can keep data up to speed and have this so that the public sees where our dollars are going. So thank you.
All right, thank you. And back to item eight, Councilmember Tao.
Yes, wanted to commend staff on, you know, getting Renfree Field renovation going, you know, especially our YPSI staff definitely working on this project. I know when I was a council staffer, this was one of the items that, you know, council has been trying to help out, finding funding for the De Paso Regional Park project. And, you know, Renfree Field has been a staple in the community for the longest time. Definitely a place that we want the community to utilize again. And so I see that, you know, staff has got this project going to bid and we're awarding the bid tonight and definitely getting this project going. So I'd like to commend staff for finally getting this project across the finish line and hope to see, you know, new renovated Renfree Field that the community can use.
Excellent. Great comments. I just wanted to make a quick comment on item 10 myself. I just, for the Franklin Boulevard Complete Streets project, wanted to give my sincere gratitude to senior engineer Megan Johnson and your team for all the hard work on this project. I know, I hope nobody in the community is looking at this and seeing the word rejection and thinking something bad. In fact, I really want to commend staff for their hard work on this and making sure that things are going along in the right timeline, that we're getting the right people to do the job. And so I know that takes work and sometimes going back to the drawing board just a little bit. But I'm really excited to see this project move forward. It's going to be huge for the community along Franklin Boulevard and just really wanted to appreciate all the work to date. And along with my predecessor, Jason Year, who helped us get the project started as well. So I just wanted to tell the community, don't see the word and get scared. We're still moving along full steam ahead. And so with that, Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comment?
Yes, I have three speakers on the consent calendar. The first is Isaac Gonzalez on item two, Mark Harmon on item two, and then David Marc Unsoon on item five.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. My name's Isaac Gonzalez. I'm the vice chair of the Active Transportation Commission and the founder of Slow Down Sacramento. And I just came out tonight to give our strong support to item two on tonight's agenda. The proposal to reestablish and reduce speed limits on key streets across our city is a critical step forward in our collective effort to make Sacramento streets safer for all road users. Speed is a major contributing factor in the severity of crashes, particularly those involving pedestrians and cyclists. By lowering our speed limits on 14 streets and maintaining them on others, we're acknowledging this reality and taking the necessary action to protect our community. But speed limit changes alone are not enough. We must also push for changes to the built environment that will reinforce these lower speeds and make them more intuitive for drivers. This is where I hope tactical urbanism can come into play through quick build, cost-effective interventions. We can mimic other cities who have reached their Vision Zero goals and make immediate and demonstrative changes to our streets that complement those speed limit reductions. Whether narrowing lanes with paint, adding curb extensions, or installing temporary roundabouts, these measures can significantly influence driver behavior and encourage them to slow down and drive more safely. They are also extremely cost-effective and implementable very quickly. So by adopting tonight's resolution and also considering tactical urbanism as a companion strategy, I believe we can create a safer, more livable city for everyone. So I urge the council not only to approve tonight's item, but to also continue to support initiatives that bring about real positive changes to Sacramento streets. Thank you for your time and considerations, and congratulations for the Topgolf up in South Sacramento.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. And I see that Councilmember Valenzuela?
No, I just had a quick question for the city manager based on that comment. Thank you, Isaac. I know we had talked about getting, having a discussion about hiring a consultant to design a quick build program for the city. Is that, if you have any updates you could share on that?
I don't know if Ryan Moore is in the audience here, maybe could talk about this a little bit here? I don't know what the status is. I know we had a conversation about it, and so they...
He's motioning to...
I know enough to know what I don't know.
Okay, that's fair. Oh, no, there's Dave.
Welcome.
Good evening. David Drossen, Public Works. As far as an update on the tactical urbanism, we've gone out and received three different quotes as far as the work that can be done. We are reviewing each of them because the work that's described varies and the cost varies. So we are currently reviewing that and will make a decision as far as who we're going to choose and which way we're going to go.
Awesome. That's a great update. Thank you.
I appreciate it, Dave. And also, I've not gotten the full briefing from the staff yet. And so we just, we're going to work through and figure out what makes sense to bring forward and I'll bring them back to the council.
Awesome. Yeah, thank you. I appreciate updates on the process because as you can tell from our Active Transportation Commission vice chair, it's an item of great interest from our constituents. So thank you, Dave.
Thank you for the update.
Thanks, Dave.
Next speaker is Mark Harmon. Following Mark is Richard Markison. Welcome.
Hi. Hello. My name is Mark Harmon, and I am a resident of District Seven. And I am a strong supporter of item number two on the agenda tonight. We must give law enforcement the tools necessary to make our streets safer. As you guys all know, Sacramento has the highest active transportation death rate in the state of California. And so I think, and to be honest, I'm tired of having near misses on my bicycle every time I ride, so, almost every time I ride. So if we could do something about it, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Markison on item five.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor, councilmembers, Richard Markison. I've been a 38-year resident of District Seven. And I'm here to talk to you tonight about your proposed contract to monitor your project labor agreement. Now, I know Mayor Steinberg and councilmembers Gara and Jennings were the only current members of the council who were in office when the PLA was first adopted. But it's a complete waste of money. For those of you who are not familiar with the project labor agreement, it's a no-bid sole-source contract for construction labor. And before any member of the council objects to that characterization, this is not sole source where you pick a single contractor. But any contractor who is employed on covered projects has only one source for the labor, and that's from the constituent unions of the Sierra Building Trades, whether they're a union signatory contractor or not. PLA's cost taxpayers money. For instance, the city of Fresno had a five-story parking structure where they rejected all of the bids because the bids came back at 132% of the engineer's estimate. So already, you're paying somewhere between 18 and 30% more or taxpayers are receiving 18 to 30% less for every tax dollar that you expend. And now on top of that, you're adding a $300,000 contract to monitor your project labor agreement. And one of the objectives and one of the reasons that the building trades tout project labor agreements is because it eliminates cheating. Arguably, if it eliminated cheating, you wouldn't need a $300,000 contract in order to monitor it. You're wasting taxpayer dollars who receive less for every dollar that they spend on infrastructure. And we would certainly encourage you to adopt new requirements for fair and open competition
for city construction.
Thank you for your comments. Vice Mayor, I have no more speakers on consent. All right, thank you. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, abstain? Passes unanimously. Now, we're moving on to item 11. 2025 P Street as a landmark on the Sacramento Register of Historic and Cultural Resources. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Henry Fuest, preservation planner with the Community Development Department, presenting the landmark nomination for 2025 P Street under M24003. The property owner at 2025 P Street procured historic environment consultants to draft a historic evaluation of their property, which found the property historically significant under Criterion Three for the Sacramento Register of Historic and Cultural Resources. They sent it to preservation staff in March of 2024, and we cycled through the Director and Preservation Commission process, which went in June of 2024. And they found it unanimously significant under Criterion Three and recommended it eligible for listing on the Sacramento Register. So we have the, we have received no public comments opposing or supporting the listing besides from the property owner. Thank you.
Right. Thank you so much. Do we have any public testimony on the item?
I have no public comments on this item.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Thank you very much. It's a gorgeous building. I'm really glad it will have this protection. And with that, I'll open and close the public hearing and move the item.
Thanks.
Thank you. Is there a second?
All second.
There's a second on the item from Councilmember Kaplan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain? Thank you. That passes. Let's move to the second historic and cultural resource issue on today's agenda.
Yes, so next up, we have 104944 Street, which is a similar case. I shouldn't introduce myself again. Henry Fuest, preservation planner. So this was a similar case in District Four, but this is in the deferred area represented by the mayor. It's an owner-initiated nomination. They procured historic environment consultants who found the building eligible under Criterion Three for the Sacramento Register. Similarly, we took it through the process, and the Preservation Commission recommended it eligible in June of 2021, 2024 unanimously for under Criterion Three. We have received no public comments opposing the listing. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
This is, again, District Four. What's that? Oh, it's the deferred.
It's the deferred. Yeah.
It's the deferred. Wow. Just for a second. No, I would happily turn it over to Councilmember Valenzuela.
Oh, sure. Another beautiful building. Javelldone staff. I'm happy to open, close the public hearing and move the item.
Proud it's in my district, okay?
All second.
And Mayor, I have no more public comment on the item.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, abstain. Very good. Thank you. Let's move to item 13 and 14. Can we take both of these together or then vote on them separately? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and members of the city council. I'm Peter Lemos. I'm your Code and Housing Enforcement Chief for the Community Development Department. I'm here to bring for you the Neighborhood Code Compliance and Housing in Dangerous Buildings case fees and penalties for special assessment and personal obligations. This is for items 13 and 14. I would like to present them concurrently and have a separate vote. Item 13, the Housing in Dangerous Building Case Fees Staff Report listed amended total of 184 properties with a total of $364,642 of unpaid fees scheduled for liens against the properties. Nine properties listed in Exhibit A of the staff report have been removed. Those numbers are identified as 23, 111 through 115, 129 through 134, 247 through 251, 272 through 274, 296, 314, 315, 337, and 339. For item 14, the Community Development Department Administrative Penalties and Neighborhood Code Compliance Case Fees Staff Reports lists the 341 properties with a sum of $868,326.75 of unpaid fees and penalties scheduled for special assessment and/or personal obligations. Staff recommends that the city council adopt the two resolutions separately to allow the city to collect the unpaid fees by placing special assessments, levies, and personal obligations. Eight of the properties listed in Exhibit A of the staff report have been removed from item 14. They are numbered 107 through 110, 129 through 131, 253, 284 through 289, 315 through 318, 375, 415, 416, and 577. And that concludes my presentation.
Vice Mayor?
Oh, just happy to open and close the public hearing and move the item.
On item...
13.
On item 13. Very... Second, we don't, do we have anybody? We do not? Okay, it's easy. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain? It's a tough job up here, let me tell you.
I also make a motion to open and close the public hearing for item 14 and move the item.
Very good. Moved and seconded. No public testimony. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain? Okay, that passes unanimously. And that concludes the formal agenda. Are there council ideas and questions before we end with public testimony on items not on the agenda? Start with Councilmember Vang.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a few announcements. Wanted to announce that tomorrow, from 6:30 to 8 o'clock, is an open house community info session regarding the 102 acres. City staff will be present to share a little bit about the opportunity constraint analysis and discuss kind of first, next steps to bring the item to Mayor and council. So really encouraging our community members to come out to the info session. This is run by city staff, and after that, we are hosting four advocacy session on the 102 acres. And so stay tuned for that. I also wanted to announce that this Thursday at August 15th, from 5:30 to 8:30, there's a lot happening at the Pennell Community Center this week. The city community engagement team is actually hosting their monthly City Connect mixer at the Pennell Pool. There's going to be hot dogs and hamburgers, music, so come through. That's from 5:30 to 8:30. And then, happening at the same time, is also our backpack giveaway at the Pennell Community Center. And I'm working with our city staff at YPSI to do a backpack giveaway as well, 5:30 to 7:30. So both of these events are happening at the same time. The pool is going to be super-activated, and the community center is going to be activated with backpack giveaways. And then this Saturday, wanted to share that our Fire Station Seven is having their open house. So a swing-by, that's at 6500 Wyndham Drive, from 10 to 12 o'clock. And then also wanted to share as well, right after that, the next following day on Sunday, the Cabrillo Pool. It's the last day of the pool season for our Cabrillo Pool in the Cabrillo and Medevue area. So encouraging folks to come out. The pool will be open from 1 to 5 and free emissions sponsored by my office. So encouraging folks to bring out their families, and we'll have popsicles as well. And then also just wanted to share, we discussed this at the Racial Equity Committee meeting, but I believe there is a listening session happening this week in District Two. There's going to be a South one happening at the Pennell Community Center on August 21st. All the council members should have received a flyer from the Racial Equity Alliance and Council. So really encouraging you all to share that out to the community. Feedback from those listening session will inform the resolution that the Alliance and Council is developing to bring to Mayor and council. So really encouraging my colleagues to share that information. And then lastly, the end of this month, August 24th, at Valley High Park, we are having our Fourth Annual South SAC Festival. So there's lots happening in South Sacramento and Medevue, and wanted to announce those events. Thanks, Mayor.
Terrific. Thank you. Mayor Protem Talamontes?
Thank you, Mayor. If you are in Sacramento and you are a dancing queen or king, you like dancing, I invite you to come celebrate Natomas with us at the South Natomas Community Center. We're having an ABBA tribute band. It was my parents' favorite band growing up, so it's something that I absolutely love. And it'll be the 14th annual. It's something that started way before my time, and I wanted to continue the tradition alive. So I've invited all the organizations that are near and dear to Natomas community to this event. So please join us. We also have COVID ARPA funds available for the North Gate Corridor. I have $200,000 available in storefront beautification projects. So I encourage all businesses to apply. The grants are $5,000 up to $15,000 and really trying to just make the North Gate Corridor brighter, more pretty, and have people be able to enjoy it and feel safe at our restaurants. And in addition, I was able to announce Topgolf is coming to the city of Sacramento, which is really exciting, and they chose Natomas. And so it's been a fun 24 hours. So thank you. And so we, the exact location of it has not been disclosed, but that will be next Wednesday from 5:30 to 7:30. There'll be renderings, the location, and Q and A with Topgolf staff at Venture Oaks. So please join us for this exciting announcement.
Congratulations. It's fantastic. Councilmember Valenzuela?
Sure. Well, I was going to start off by announcing the third of a three-part movie series at Crocker Museum honoring Greta Gerwig, but the tickets are sold out. But we're watching Lady Bird on Thursday, and so if you want to hook up, call our office colleagues. We'll just bring you with us as our plus one. But starting next Friday, the 23rd, is the first of a three-part movie series we're doing with the Ernesto Drogado Hospitality Group focusing on local sports. So the next Friday's movie will be in partnership with SAC Republic, and we'll be showing Will Ferrell's movie Kicking and Screaming. Highly recommend. Next one will be with The Athletics, and the one after that will be with The Kings. So more details coming on our social media this week, but save the date for next Friday. And then finally, Mr. City Manager, I was just hoping for a status update on a Grants Pass Presentation Discussion item at council, and when we might just expect that to come forward.
Okay, I'll let you know.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Maple?
Thank you, Mayor. Also want to extend a hearty congratulations to my colleague, Mayor Protem Talamontes, for a really exciting announcement in your district. I think having Topgolf come is going to be a huge win, not only for District Three, but for the entire community and the region. So looking forward to playing some games with you there. Just a few updates or a few announcements on my end. We have our Coffee with Katie event. That's this Thursday at 2:00 PM at the New Naked Coffee in Curtis Park at 2901 30th Street. Please do register on our website so that you can get a spot. We have a 15-minute segment where people can come in and book some time to talk with us, myself and my staff, about any constituent issues, concerns, questions, or just any ideas that you have. So Thursday at 2:00 PM. This Saturday, we've got two really fun events on the same day. 10:00 AM at McClatchy Park, we have Celebrate Oak Park. So it is the biggest event of the year in Oak Park. We have thousands of people that show up. We've got vendors from all over. We do this in partnership with the Oak Park Neighborhood Association, S-MUD, and many, many more. So please do come by. That's from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at McClatchy Park. And then at 11:00 AM, if you want to go to the other side of my district, you can go to the Golf Course Terrace Estates Neighborhood Association. Their annual ice cream social that's taking place at Chorley Park. And again, that starts at 11:00 AM. Come eat some ice cream, come listen to music, and have a good time. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kaplan?
Thank you, Mayor. This Friday, you can start your evening in South Natomas at Celebrate Natomas with Councilmember Talamontes. And when that ends, come up movie, District One movie night. We are playing Raya and the Last Dragon at North Natomas Regional Park. Activities start at 7:00, but the movie doesn't start until dusk time, so 8:15. Plenty of time to show up. Bring your blankets. It's going to be a beautiful evening. We'll have popcorn for everyone. And then Saturday morning, it is our farmer's market. But this Saturday, I will be joining yoga and coffee. So come have yoga first and then a cup of coffee with me. And if you want to talk to me and you also want to talk to our mayor... And if you want to talk to me, and you also want to talk to our mayor, from 11:00 to 12:00 this Saturday at the North Natomas Community Center, so I'll just hop over from the park to the community center. Our fine mayor is coming to District One, and so I invite all residents to come out and talk to him about concerns and issues you have and things you would like to see for District One.
Thank you. I will not be doing yoga, by the way. Councilmember Tao?
Just a couple of announcements from my district. Piggyback on what Councilmember Mai mentioned earlier. Sacramento Racial Equity Alliance is hosting a series of three listening sessions. The first one will be in my district tomorrow. And then the second one will be in District Eight. And then the third one will be on Zoom. They're looking to meet with residents. I am told that we have 700 Zoom registrants, but we really want to, we really want to see people and residents in person. And so definitely, I encourage everyone to attend our Racial Equity Alliance meeting tomorrow at Hagewood Community Center, 3271 Marizville Boulevard at 6:00 p.m. And then, next is, North Sacramento is getting its first boba shop. Do you believe that? So we do not have a boba shop in my district, and we are getting our first boba shop. Bella's Boba Shop was launching its grand opening on 563 Eleanor Avenue. It's the first-ever boba shop in North Sacramento and offer a diverse menu featuring a wide variety selection of delicious boba, drinks, and other treats. Saturday, August 10, starting at 10:00 a.m., 563 Eleanor Avenue. And then lastly, Grant Union High School will be launching its ribbing cutting for its baseball and softball complex. And so this is a full remodel of the baseball and softball conflicts, complex, this Friday, August 16, at 8:30 a.m. to 9:30 a.m. So it's, come out, see the new revamped high school at New Fields. I believe this is, you would have to register ahead, and so definitely reach out to the school district. But I will be out there and excited to see everyone out there to celebrate the new opening. And that is all.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Tao. Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Mayor. Want to ask everyone to join District Seven this Friday, August 16, for our monthly trucks and such, which takes place from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Garchabend Park. We encourage you to bring your chairs, your blankets, family and friends. Join us for some delicious foods from the food trucks and the smooth jazz sounds from Joel Mazaferro, Under the Stars. And so we're going to have a wonderful time from 5:00 to 8:00. We encourage you to come on out for a great evening, and we hope it won't be so hot that we got to cancel this concert. So weather looks like it's going to be nice, 91. So come on out for a great time. It's jazz in the park. You can't miss. We canceled in August because it was too hot, but we won't cancel now because I understand the temperature is going to cooperate. So come on out for a great time for food and jazz and conversation.
Excellent. And Councilmember Geta?
Thank you very much, Mayor. One, I'm excited to participate this weekend and also to thank AT&amp;T and Human IT in a partnership with Sac State, with St. Hope, St. John's Program for Real Change, and also the Roberts Family Development Center. We'll be giving out 500 laptops to students and families as they get ready for their new year in the school season and also for their first year and semester at Sac State. And many of these families have experienced homelessness. They're moving in their step forward, and they're really looking at that next opportunity in education. So very excited. Big kudos again to AT&amp;T, Human IT, and our nonprofit partners and educational partners with that. So that'll be this Saturday at Sac State. Singers up. Thank you.
That's great. God, so, so much going on in our community, north to south, east to west, all the districts. Really great. Thank you. Yes, please.
Councilmember Tao just made a really good point. We have more Aggies on this dais now than Hornets. Sorry, Sac State, UC Davis, we're winning.
Sounds like a challenge.
It just shows it only takes. That's right.
Ruins. I love it. We now move to public comments for items not on the formal agenda. And why don't we take that, and we'll adjourn the meeting?
Thank you, Mayor. I have four speakers, Guy Stevenson, Tyrone Johnson, Michael Coleman, and Kevin Bolts.
Mayor, City Councilmembers, I have an issue that I want to bring up. I have a lot of Muslim friends that are from the Middle East, people from Afghanistan, people from Iraq, from Syria. And I had a meeting a couple of days ago with a bunch of them. And a lot of them feel like that we don't welcome them enough. And people need to educate people about the Quran, about the religion. They're really, really humble people. I love them. I just had dinner last night at one of them, and they're just awesome people. But people are not used to the burkas and the face mask and all that, and they get picked on. And they're not terrorists. And I get tired of people saying, oh, these people that wear burkas and all, they're from the Middle East, are terrorists. They're not. They're very humble people. They love the United States, but they also love their country. The only thing that I'm addressing this for is because I've witnessed it. I don't like it. I don't like anything that has to do with any hate at all. No matter whether what your religion is, what your beliefs is, you have the right to believe in what you want to believe in, and nobody should beat you up for it. So that's all I'm asking. If you could possibly, somewhere down the line, maybe have a, some type of program where you can educate the public on people from the Middle East, because there's a big group of them here, and they're just really super-nice people. So thank you very much, and you all have a great night.
Really appreciate you coming. Thank you. It's a good message.
Tyrone Johnson. Following Tyrone is Michael Coleman, then Kevin Bolts.
Panel, my respects. I also want to give respects to former Chief Daniel Hahn and Chief Lester. Today, I stand before you as a citizen of Sacramento. I am the citizen that was given this by the Senate for my bravery. My understanding is, I didn't see the body cam, so I can't tell you everything as I know as I went into action. And the city said that I saved a couple of officers from being hurt. I was the only person hurt at the matter. I need to speak to my councilwoman, Ms. Mai Van. I have since had an abrasion. I have had a stroke. And I believe that it came from me when I was grabbing the suspect. I was electrocuted probably about four times because the officer was tasing the suspect. I have done some wonderful things in the city. I work with the UCP right now. I'm helping children. I feed hundreds of people a month. And now I'm requesting some help from the city if possible. I'm, I can't work right now because of, I have AFID. And I had the surgery, and so far, it's holding up great. So I'm here today to talk to my council. And my respects to everyone here. I'll go out and continue to do great in this city.
In addition to Councilmember Vang, we do have Assistant City Manager Mario Lara, who's happy to talk to you, sir, about what you just described, if you would like that tonight.
Sure.
He's right back there, in the second to the last row on the right. There he is.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and enjoy the rest of your night.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker is Michael Coleman, then Kevin Bolts. And so Michael Coleman and Kevin Bolts will be our final speaker this evening.
Mayor Steinberg, Councilmember Tao. I've been in, I'm in touch with members of your staff in your office, and I will continue to be in touch as time goes along. In conjunction with the homeless, I've developed a proposal. Actually, it was their idea. I just developed it. And I would like an opportunity to explain it, enumerate it in detail. So I look forward to explaining that later. I know what the city plans to do this week, moving forward with respect to the homeless. And I beg of you not to do this thing. It will only serve to exacerbate the problem and make it worse. I know the governor is trying to intimidate and strong-arm the cities and counties into doing things his way, but there's a better solution. I know there's a better solution. And if you will only listen to our plan and review the data and test it out, I think you'll be surprised just how much money it will save the city, both in time and resources, and how well the homeless can govern themselves and be responsible and accountable if we give them that chance. And if it works here, it'll work anywhere. That's all we're asking, is just for a chance. Just give us a chance to explain it and test it out. Look at the data. If you don't like it, that's okay. We won't do it. But if it works, if you think there's a chance that it could work, I think it's worth trying out. It's worth testing. Nevertheless, for those of you that think the governor's mandate is a good idea, I have just one question. After they've been forcibly evicted and thrown in jail, had their property confiscated, and find out their pets are dead, what do you think they're going to do when they get out of jail? What do you think they're going to do?
May I give you your comments? Kevin Bolts?
See, I would love to discuss how Kamala Harris would not have charged Sonia Massey's police executioner because she doesn't do that, but I can't talk about that because Israel rapes. I would love to discuss the boy with Down Syndrome who was mauled to death by an IDF dog and during which muttered his first words and last words, "Chalas Habibi, enough, my love." But we can't talk about that because Israel rapes.
Point of order, excuse me, Mr. Bolts. The point of order.
I'm talking about well-known, public, and reported-on news issues.
It is not an item within the purview of the city.
You passed a resolution about Israel, and you mentioned sexual assault in that language, which made it the purview of the city council.
Okay, finish up your minute twenty.
I would love to, if you'd stop interrupting me. I would love to talk about Abu Al Khumson, who today picked up birth certificates for his two four-year-old twins, only to return home and find them martyred in airstrike along with their mother and grandmother. I saw a picture of a broken man holding two birth certificates soon to be replaced by two death certificates. And what happened when the nine soldiers who raped demanded death were arrested? The Knesset held an emergency session to debate its legality. Smoltrich and Gavir defended it as just, and an armed segment of the population rose up to infiltrate the jail and liberate their rapist heroes. See, I would love to have a conversation with the far-right about how Zionism isn't Judaism and how the former is bastardizing the latter in the name of British colonialism. But I can't even have that conversation because Israel rapes. By the way, you guys really are a British colony. You got nonsense in everything. You decided antisemitism equaled anti-Zionism. You decided that Zionism equals Semitism, and therefore, everything Israel is doing, it is doing in the name of Jews. You decided that. You decided Israel is raping Palestinians in the name of Jews and wonder why we call it the most antisemitic thing in existence. Your disgusting language in the resolution will follow you and haunt you all everywhere you go. Ishmael Haney, Ashmama. Fuck all y'all.
Members, look forward to all of the really good community events that you talked about a few moments ago, and try to get to many as I can as possible. If there's nothing else, we are adjourned.